Welcome to the July 10th meeting of the Woodburn Planning Commission. I am Chair Ellsworth and we will get started. Can we get a roll call, please?
We sure can. Commissioner Lasson?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Bravo?
Here.
Commissioner Berlin?
Here.
Commissioner Bartel?
Here.
Vice Chair Hernandez Mejia? And Chair Ellsworth?
Here. Would you all join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty being a justice for all. Okay. Right, I see we have minutes in our packet. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, or edits? So we have a motion to approve, I'll entertain a second?
Oh, second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Okay. Do we have any business from the audience? And that would be for anything that is not somewhere on the agenda already. Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and see if we have any communications from staff. Sidney?
I don't have any, thanks.
Okay. Tonight, we have a public hearing. This one is a quasi judicial public hearing. It's scheduled. The purpose of this hearing is to ensure that all interested parties can offer relevant evidence to the commission in a timely and orderly manner. Because this is a quasi judicial hearing, commissioners should maintain an open mind and not make any decisions until after the hearing is closed and all the evidence presented at the hearing has been considered. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing on subdivision 25-01, a four lot subdivision proposed to be located on East Lincoln Street. Okay. And let the record show that Vice Chair Hernandez Mejia has arrived. So, are there any? Do any of our commissioners have any ex parte contact with the applicant or any other individual?
No.
Okay. Any site visits? Nope, no declarations. Does anyone have any conflicts or biases that would preclude them from an impartial decision in this matter? Okay. Are there any challenges to any of the disclosures or emissions by the commission? Okay, seeing none. Would you please read the hearing statement?
Of course. Both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of the hearing, this, a statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows. From the Woodburn Development Ordinance, WBO 2.02, 2.06, 3.01 through 3.08, 3.10, 3.11, 4.01, 4.02, 5.03 dot 1 0. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: staff report, applicant's presentations, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to be pertinent to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is still open.
Do we have a report? You do. From staff?
And let me make sure that I'm sharing my screen so that Commissioner Bartel see it.
I can see it.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Okay. So, good evening. I am Heidi Hinshaw, Associate Planner. It's good to see all of you commissioners tonight. We are here tonight to look at a four lot subdivision on East Lincoln. We have actually updated their address, so they do have one now. The issue before you tonight is a public hearing for a type three land use application, a subdivision. All subdivisions are type three and type threes automatically come to the Planning Commission. So even though it's a fairly straightforward application, we still need to be here to review it, make sure everything's right. Planning Commission is tasked with verifying compliance with the applicable development standards and issuing a final decision. The staff report and its attachments are entered into the record and no testimony has so far been received. This is an overview aerial shot of near western, near eastern Woodburn. The property is right here, just east of Washington Elementary School. It is an existing flag lot, which is a little unusual. Usually, flag lots only happen when there's development at the same time, but that wasn't the case here. So we've got the existing home to the east, which is 1035 East Lincoln, which will be interesting later. Believe the homeowners are here today. And then 993 East Lincoln, that homeowner is also here. So we have Washington Elementary School and the Wood Park Terrace Apartments to the north. All of these properties are medium density residential, except for the school, which is public land school property. And across the street, across East Lincoln, is single family residential. This blue indicates flood plain and you can see that the property has nothing wet on it, which is nice for them. So this is the proposal, to divide this flag lot into four lots with one tract acting as an access easement for the two neighboring properties, which currently use this driveway as their driveway. So part of the application is to stub out their existing drive. Driveways? There'll be little stubs here to go into their houses. And then this is an access easement for the new four lots. You can see that there's a hammerhead fire truck turnaround planned to go right here. And then, oh, this line indicates the 12-foot access easement for bicycles and pedestrians, which will be all along the edge of the western side of the property. The proposed subdivision complies with all the standards or can through conditions of approval. And I'd like to point out that the applicant did not ask for any variances or adjustments. They just met all the requirements. The street improvements that they intend to do are driveway apron and sidewalk repair and then improving the accessibility for bikes and pets. This is what it looks like more or less right now. I think this, I'm not actually sure what the date of this photo is, but it's Google Street View and it looks pretty much like this. So you can see there's a pothole here and a pothole here and so it's going to look better, we imagine. One thing that's kind of interesting is that this driveway is not indicative of the actual property lines. The property lines are actually a little bit wider than this driveway. So this retaining wall will need to be replaced. And also, the new prop, I actually have it here. This new property line is going to cut really close to this tree's root structure. So we'll come back to that in a minute, but this picture is a good, it shows you what I'm talking about. Also, this property, this is the property to the west. And there's about a 10-foot segment of sidewalk, which we've conditioned that they replace to link up with this upgraded intersection crossing with improved ADA ramps and sidewalks all along here. So you can go pretty smoothly from all along here through the new sidewalk and then to the upgraded crossing here. So, and the applicant agreed to do that. So, yeah, that's what condition six is. Condition nine talks about that easement I mentioned earlier. So the reason for this bicycle and pedestrian easement is that it's within this huge block. So imagine you're a kid and you live up here and you're trying to go to school down here. You have to walk all the way around. And so, in actually three sections of the code, we talk about breaking up some of these super blocks that we have in town, at least for bikes and pets, not necessarily for cars, but to increase the accessibility, both east-west and north-south. So, as you can see, it's only going to be half the block. But if we get that easement now, in the future, we can hopefully pump it through, all the way to Hard Castle, through this apartment complex. So right now, we are not asking the applicant to do any improvements of this easement. It does link up with their driveway that they're paving, so it will be a paved driveway. It will stub out right here at that property line. And then, should this property develop in the future and we get a new easement, that property owner will be responsible for paving something right here and creating a continued pathway. Yep. Okay. In terms of trees, there actually are no significant trees on the property, not very many trees at all. The neighboring property to the east has a nice dogwood, which they're going to save and take precautions to keep it from dying. And to the east is a nice big maple tree. But unfortunately, the roots are going to be really close to where that excavation for the widened driveway is going to be. And so, I spoke with the arborist and the arborist was a little, didn't really want to commit, but they kind of won't know what they're going to get until they get in there and see what the roots look like. But they will try to save it unless it's a terrible idea to save it. Regardless, it is under 24 inches at diameter breast height. So we don't require a permit to remove it. It's just that it's a nice tree and we'd like to save it if we can. So, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. As long as the applicant conforms substantially with the plans that they've provided, which meet the WBO standards, they should be okay to construct those street improvements along East Lincoln, including the sidewalk repair, ADA ramps, driveway approach improvement. Because the driveway, the lot, is basically just a driveway where it meets East Lincoln, so the front edge, there is no place to put a street tree, so we aren't requiring your street tree, but we are requiring that they pay the fee in lieu so that we can plant it somewhere else. And then doing, recording the easements. So both the easements for the neighbors to continue using their driveways, a shared access agreement for the new four lots, and the bike ped easement for the future. And then the last condition is that they construct walkways connecting the public sidewalk to each entrance of any future housing that gets built on those four lots, which they show in their plans. So next steps are questions for me. And then, the applicant is here to introduce himself. And then we have some testimony that might be presented. And then, action. Do you have any questions for me?
Are there any questions for staff at this point?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay, I did have one. Can you bring up the plan with the little, how it goes to the little? No, one more, that's the drawing. That's the drawing. There we go. I see one has the walkway, pedestrian walkway shown. How will property number one get to, where's the driveway for property number one?
I don't have that in my slides, but it essentially goes like this and like this. That's how the applicant drew it in the plans. Does that make sense? Okay.
If it's cement, how are they going to get in there? I mean, if the driveways or that strip is so narrow?
Well, this is, it's 12 feet. So this, you can't see this because it's super tiny.
That top piece is 12 feet?
Yeah.
So 24 across?
24 across. So 12 on this side and 12 on this side. A usual driveway is maybe eight feet wide.
Like it went down to, okay.
It does look super small, but it's not.
Stop and back up. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Right, hearing none, I'd like to invite the applicant up and share their plans. Welcome. Please make sure that the microphone is on and give us your name and address for the record. Perfect.
For the record, my name is Cesar Lopez, I'm the project engineer for Marpes LLC. I'm representing as LLC.
All right.
You might try just switching chairs to the other one. That mic is really sensitive for some reason. This one is much more agreeable.
Yes, yes, there you go.
I apologize.
Thank you. So, Cesar Lopez, for the record, the project engineer for Marpes Engineering, representing the property owner for the lot that's being developed. And, you know, mostly it's, the development is for the four lots, two, four duplexes. It's a really difficult terrain lot to work with. We try to work with all the neighbors for many options to make it workable. It was really difficult to develop, but the goal here is to, you know, to build additional residents and basically try to, we met all the requirements. We work with the planners, they've been really helpful through the whole process. And the same for the Public Works folks. So we've been communications mostly, just here to see if there's any questions you guys might have that I could answer. The, the public, the public bike easement, it's going to be given to be reserved there for future use. And, you know, the driveway question, it was one that was definitely difficult to figure it out, how that was going to work. And we did have back and forth discussions with the planners. But ultimately, you know, it seems like we were able to work something out.
Questions from the commission for the applicant? I take it this place is owned for a duplex, so.
And I have a question about what's, what's the tentative design for the duplexes? Are there going to be one on top of the other or one right next to each other? How do you envision that for each one?
Commissioner, there will be a townhouse style duplex side by side, two stories. Each duplex is going to be a 3-2, approximately under 1,600 square feet. It's good, you know, pretty typical size.
800, 800?
Well, it's going to be mostly about 600 on the bottom, if I recall, then the rest will be on the top. It's a pretty large duplex. For half, that's half.
Each one?
So each one, 1,600. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
So each one will be 1,600, just under 1,600. So total will almost be 3,200. Yes, sorry.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this project? Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone wishing to speak in favor. I see I have a green sheet in front of me. You selected neutral. So would you like to come forward? And I believe you are Iris Amaya?
Yes.
Welcome. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Iris Amaya and I live at the house at the 1035 East Lincoln. And I'm neutral. Actually, he's talked about the project. I'm kind of excited for it too as well. I just have concerns if the sewage and water pipes are going to be replaced. Because if they're going to, yeah, that's going to be replaced. And also, if I'm going to get a fence in the back of my property, a privacy fence. The other is, I guess with the development, if they're going to cover if any damage happens to my house. But I'm thinking like the, when they're pounding the ground or something, that's my concern because my house is pretty old. So that's pretty much my three concerns about the.
Anybody else that would like to speak?
A quick clarification on that. You said sewer and water. What's your concern with that exactly?
Because I know the piping's old. And so we're adding these three, four new developments. Are they going to replace?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else that would like to speak, either neutral or against this project? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to invite the applicant back up for a rebuttal.
Do I need to say my name again?
No, you're good.
No, I think we're working with the property owners, we'll, concerns as construction, when construction gets started. We understand their concerns. So we'll continue working with the property owners. It's, it's part of the process.
Okay. And I have a question for staff. Have you consulted Public Works about whether or not the current sewer can handle the additional units? Is that part of the process?
I have not spoken to City Engineer Garcia about that personally. I know that he has spoken with Cesar quite a lot. So I feel pretty confident. City Engineer Garcia did provide Public Works conditions of approval, but they didn't explicitly mention that. So, and I think Dan is going to the code.
Well, I was just going to jump in and add, the public lines along the right of way have the capacity. These duplexes will each have their own individual connections.
To the tree.
So, the question about the existing dwellings, their own individual connections, I don't think would be impacted by this subdivision.
So your current sewer lines, they should not tap into your line. Your line will continue to go to the street unobstructed. The new subdivision, the new houses, will have their own line that then ties into the street. So that should not impact you, is what I am hearing.
Yeah, that's correct. So the new lots, the new units will have their own lines together, all private, all the way through East Lincoln City for connecting to the public utilities. All of them will be in the driveway. There's no other utilities currently there for that lot. So we do not anticipate any impacts to the adjacent utilities. There is, there is one, but it's PGE and it's a pole right in the middle of the driveway that we've been working with them to relocate.
So I'd like to hear what the minimum requirements are, just to ease the residents' concerns about, you know, obviously, I know that when there's construction, there's always insurance involved. So just things like that that can get mentioned, again, just to kind of ease some of those concerns that they brought up. And what are the minimum requirements? For instance, I know fencing is probably something else that's going to be separate, but I would like that clarified so that they are aware and know what might be expected.
Well, one thing I can speak to is that they have already applied and, but received a grading permit. And I know that Doug Garcia looked at it with me very carefully. They weren't required to get a DEQ permit because it's less than an acre. But they have erosion control fencing around the whole site, which they'll put in. And I think that's all I have. Dan may have more.
I think the actual question is, do the site plans show a fence to separate the applicant's property from the current resident property?
A permanent, not just one during construction, but a permanent fence?
A permanent privacy fence between the two properties. A good neighbor.
I don't believe that the plans show that.
No, the current, the building permits haven't been submitted, they haven't been created. If that's something that it's going to be required, I think we could work it in.
So the commission does have the ability to condition a screening fence between properties? If you think that's reasonable? And then, Commissioner Mejia, were you asking about damage to her property more? Is that?
I was just wanting to address, because I know that there's going to be insurances and it's always a requirement, but just again, it be brought up so that there isn't that concern. And if something does happen that there is, you know, what are the expectations as far as like coverage and making sure that her home will be all right?
And Commissioner, the nearest building will be set pretty back from the current structure there. We're talking more than just the five foot setbacks that we do, you know, with the neighbor house. We're talking a few 30, 40 feet for the first building where we're going to do. The closest construction will be anything we do at the driveway, which is about 20 feet to the side, 15 to 20 feet if I recall correctly. And restoring the wall that is in the existing driveway, which it's going to be in the front.
Retaining wall.
Yeah. Retaining wall.
Thank you. And more again, just because I know, before being here, I didn't know any of these things either. And, you know, again, knowing that there's construction happening close by, there easily can be concerns. And so I'm just wanting to appease a little bit of that, those concerns. Thank you, though. You're good, yeah.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I am going to close this hearing and we can deliberate. Okay. Comments? Commissioner Bartel, let's start with you.
I don't know that I have any concerns, other than it would be nice to get down some kind of a fence. It has, because it's been expressed by the current property owner that's the neighbor. I think putting something down about a fence between the new properties and her property would be something we could do. Otherwise, I think it sounds great. We could definitely use the housing.
I've got a question with that. So, they're going to be, right now, it's just to do the separate lots. That's what we're deciding on. And they're going to be coming back when they have the designs ready. I'm assuming when they come with the designs, it's when we would be conditioning that privacy wall? Or would that be something we can do now? Okay, just making sure that, thank you.
There's no guarantee that it would come back before us. The only reason it's really before us is because it is a subdividing of this lot. That's why it comes to us. If, when they build the houses, everything is up to spec, standard and everything, and they are not asking for special conditions, it won't come back. So if we want to ensure as one of the conditions that the applicant work with the property owner to determine some type of screening, and I would be hesitant to. property owner to determine some type of screening, and I would be hesitant to say exactly what that screening is. Um, if at some point they decide that our provider is fine, or if they decide the chain link fence is fine, or if they decide a wooden fence is fine, but um
That's not fine, it's the chain link.
It is with the black slats, you know, the one that I have between myself and my neighbor is, the black slats are better than the the wood. So I think if we want to, that is one thing that we want to put in our motion as a condition.
And South End of Lot Four, I think that's what we're looking at.
But I I don't know that we need to specify what that privacy block is.
Can we say mutually agreeable by both parties? Without being super specific, I agree with Chair Ellsworth, I don't, it's hard to know what would make sense at the time.
The only concern, sorry, city attorney here, yeah, so the only concern that we would have with mutually agreed upon is that if no agreement is reached, then the condition of approval isn't met, and if the condition of approval isn't met, then uh the project can't go forward, and so we've had this happen in the past where we had some squishy language and it became problematic, so my recommendation, I suppose, would be perhaps to set a height for the fit for the screening um that would be adequate as privacy, to provide the privacy, but wouldn't necessarily stipulate the material of the screening and uh Dan and Heidi can look into the code cuz they're much more familiar with it than I am, I know that we have various heights for privacy and screening uh within the WDO that they could uh pull up and make a recommendation.
Just to piggyback off of uh this Assistant City Attorney, um my recommendation would be to, you could provide two options, um you could outline either a a six-foot tall fence. All right, the code allows up to seven feet, so six is just the most commonly uh dimensioned fence.
Minimum a six-foot fence.
Uh, or or a a wall of vegetation, or a line of shrubs, or a couple different options for them to pick from, or would that be less squishy?
Yeah, I think uh one of those, yeah, as long as it's they're a firm, it will be one of these things.
Okay.
Then.
I just don't wanna dictate a six-foot block wall if neither party wants that. Okay. Anything else? With that, can can one of you assist us with the drafting of the motion? Or are you are you?
Heidi, you'll you'll have to modify it, though, Heidi. Which I'm happy to, if you would like, I can modify it on the on the spot here to include that condition.
Are you comfortable with making the motion?
Uh, I don't have, I mean, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner, for now, are you comfortable making the motion?
I mean, I'll make some motion, but they're, okay, there we go.
There we go.
I make a motion to approve sub uh twenty-five dash oh one with the conditions recommended by the staff and staff report and uh and include a uh
requirement for privacy.
Requirement um for a privacy fence between the two prop- I don't know which, how you would say the two properties. Okay, thank you, ten thirty-five East Lincoln Street and the new lot to the north. Uh, and
Did you wanna add or adequate vegetation?
Yeah. Or adequate vegetation, and direct staff to prepare a final decision for the chair to sign, thank you. Yep, side of screen, vegetation. Thank you, do you need to read it all together again, or did it sound good in parts? Want me to read it again?
Uh, that that would be best practice, we could also say so moved as
Alright, so moved.
So moved as indicated in the slide.
Okay, uh, the move does indicated in the slide.
Yeah, we have a motion, I can read in a second?
My second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And you post? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all and thank you for coming and speaking with us, that's very helpful. Okay, with that, is there any business from the commission?
I have something.
Okay, please share.
At the last meeting, I mentioned a project we were gonna get started with to help families get their account, get an account online with the state so that they could help manage their Medicaid and other benefits that they might currently have and be eligible for. Um, we're, that's still in in process, so I just wanna keep that on everybody's mind that I'm gonna be looking for volunteers and for ideas for how we can help our community do that, we we actually got it started today at my clinic in a very small way, just to see how it goes, and um so I'll I'll keep you all posted because I think it's something that could really help everyone out um in our in our town.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Um, just real quick, just wanna thank staff and and things, we are, a couple of us attended the boot camp, I don't know if you exactly wanna call it, but it was a good time, I ended up taking a day off for it, but I think I think it was well worth it, so I I just thank you guys for putting that together and yeah, take a time.
That was very interesting.
Yeah.
It's, it was really nice to see a lot of the work that's been done, we we got to tour the city and and we see a lot of these subdivisions, a lot of these applications on paper. It's nice when we get out and we can actually see the work that's being done and the growth here in the it was really refreshing to see all of that.
We got very lucky with Goodweather, too.
Yes, we did. Hey, do we have any updates from staff?
I have one, uh well, actually a couple. Uh, yesterday on our little pre-meeting briefing, um Chair Ellsworth and uh Vice Chair Hernandez Mahia brought up the question about uh vacancy rates in apartments. Uh, I don't have super detailed answers, but um uh I think Vice Chair, you were just kinda curious about vacancy rates and and how how many were doubled or tripled up, uh all the new apartments in town. Uh, I just wanted to share that I looked at apartments dot com today at uh what was available, at least, and there was uh under a hundred units listed. Um, so the Smith Creek Apartments had eight units. Pacific Valley, uh, I guess I should share where these are, Pacific Valley is just by Al's Garden uh Center on ninety-nine. They have eight vacant units out of two hundred and four total. Uh, Smith Creek Apartments, which is just on the north side of Par Road. Shoot, what's the school down there? Uh, anyway. Um, yes. They have a hundred and twenty total units, eight vacant. Cleveland Crossing, which is uh near the corner of uh Cleveland and ninety-nine, uh just south of Townsend Farms. They have forty-two total units and only two vacant. Uh, Woodburn Place combined nearly five hundred units, uh north of Safeway. Uh, forty-five units vacant. And then Woodburn Villas, which was behind the Outlet Mall, out of three hundred total units, they had eleven. So about three to six percent vacancy rate for the most part, um with Woodburn Place a little bit higher at nine, but
So is it because of the rents, are they high, or, I mean, you would think with such a shortage that everything would be not be fine, those are brand new, we could probably still fill it.
Uh, these are all market rate, yeah, so uh
And we don't know what the turnover rate is either, so they may have been vacant barely a month of all their
Yeah, yeah, this was just a snapshot, but I just wanted to check it out. We won't have a July twenty-fourth meeting, congratulations, we probably won't have any August meetings either. So you get a little summer break. But yeah, we we do expect to have September meeting, yep. Um I think we'll have more info to share on like vacancy rates and all of that because uh we are ongoingly rubbing shoulders with uh the PSU Population Research Group on Woodburn population numbers. Uh, we think our counts are very low and accurate. Um, so that's kind of an ongoing.
With that, I know that there are communities that do other, I don't know, uh work projects to definitely try to make up and show uh basically the difference in that if their numbers are higher, obviously for trying to get additional resources.
Uh, have you spoken with other cities to see if they're doing anything besides to be able to show whether it's the state
uh that their numbers are higher than what the PSU's reports state?
Didn't you uh reach out?
I've talked to, just kind of anecdotally spoken with other planners that I went to school with that worked for Estacada and um Tigard, Hillsborough, and um they've all had issues with their counts.
Yeah.
Uh, so was that your question?
More like, uh, for example, I believe Lincoln City had done some work to figure out what something that was closer to their true number, and utilizing that to then, when they spoke with state, being able to try to get those additional resources and use those numbers instead of the PSU ones, for something to that degree. Uh, and so I'm curious if you've talked with other cities, if there's any conversations as far as what tactics or what things are they doing to try to get closer to a true rate or number?
No, but we could, if that's a direction from commission.
Well, Chris, you might know better than me, but the council recently passed a resolution, right? Directed staff to start exploring this?
Uh, they did indeed, so at the last council meeting, they passed a resolution uh expressly directing staff to um work on this particular issue to try and uh figure out ways to get more accurate uh numbers. We are unfortunately still stuck with the legislative mandate that requires PSU to be the organization that does the counting, which is really frustrating. Um, but uh I agree that we certainly could um proactively reach out to other jurisdictions and get an idea of uh whether anyone has had any luck uh with different methodologies. Um, I know that we have some pretty rough estimates, and my understanding is that some of that comes from our wastewater plant, um which you all got to tour, uh because they can look at flows through the wastewater plant, and they know based on flow uh essentially uh that the flow coming through is significantly more than the uh rate of flow that would take place if the uh PSU numbers were accurate, so that is, you know, again, a little bit squishy, a little bit anecdotal, obviously. Um, but that's one thing that I know that we have heard is that um those two things are not uh meshing together the way that they should. Uh, so um we will work on that, and uh council has directed staff to work on that as well.
Well, yesterday, we talked about analyzing the water bills too, right, based on address?
Yes.
And that we could disambiguate that so it wasn't tied to so that it was anonymous, but we could still get good data. Um I wanna do, can I do that?
Uh, that I think is all I have for updates from staff.
If you're gonna look at water bills, I think you need to do it multiple times during the year, because I can tell you when I'm watering my lawn and my garden, I use way more water right now than I use during other times of the year, so I think we have to.
That's a really good point.
I see there's a difference, though, in apartment complexes, usually, though. I mean yes, they'll water lawn areas or green areas, but usually like with the units, um all, it might be different.
Typically, the irrigation has its own meter. Uh, so I think that should be able to be separated out.
Thank you, though.
Yeah.
Any other updates from staff, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned.